Day is like a new birth. It's the new day. It's an incredible day. It's hard to believe that it has come. And I think it's the greatest day we've had, aside from the birth of this nation itself.
At Scripps Ranch High School, students and teachers gather together to watch the extraordinary event. President Obama has inspired many people and is reaching the youth of America.
This makes me proud to be youth in America. Like, it's something that I can relate to, and it's something that I feel really powerful for. And I think that with the change, it's an honor to be a part of this country now.
It seems like those buzzwords, "hope" and "change," that Obama has uttered on everyone's lips from coast to coast.
No doubt the inauguration of President Barack Obama is a great moment in history. The enthusiasm is contagious from coast to coast, even in classrooms. News Eight's Rika Mutterer shows us how one local elementary school is incorporating this great milestone into lessons.
Here at Fulton Elementary, every single student watched the ceremony live on TV, but earlier this morning, they gathered to celebrate the inauguration of our new president. Before these students could watch the inauguration...
I stand here today...
They celebrated it at a special school assembly. The entire student body and staff gathered on the playground as a show of support for the new president. The dance team stepped for Obama... And selected speakers shared how the man of change inspires them.
If you put your mind to it, you can accomplish what you want to. And he says he'll make a big change in history, and I hope to see that.
This may be, no, this is, the biggest change we could ever have. I've been making Obama when he was fighting for his position, and I believe in him now.
But while some children knew a great deal about Barack Obama...
I know that he's our 44th president, and this year, his grandma just died. And he has, his wife's name is Michelle. He has two daughters. And that his two daughters' favorite Disney Channel show is Hannah Montana. And that he was born in Hawaii.
I mean, I think...
Just wanted to verify.
Yeah.
Unless they want to.
Let's see if they have.
We'll be beginning in just a minute. Thank you very much for this special board meeting, this board meeting concerning charter schools. I'm going to ask that we stand now to the pledge of allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much again. All board members are present, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask for a motion to adopt today's agenda. Be moved and seconded. Please vote. I'm sure that passes five zero. Ms. Ward is busy right now, but thank you. We're going to go under the C items for student instruction. Under C items, we have items CO1, CO3, and CO4, which is actually renewals of charters and the staff recommendation for those charters. Superintendent Greer?
Thank you, President Jackson. Rich Kansdale from our staff is here, and I'd like Rich to come up and give you staff, the staff recommendation on these. It's consistent with the information that you have, and I support Rich's recommendations.
Okay. We are recommending approval for Darnell Charter School, for Harriet Tubman, and the Learning Choice.
Okay. Okay, then let, okay. And was moved and seconded?
For those three.
Do the board members have any questions for Rich or for any of us before he sits down?
Oh, one thing.
Well, number CO1, you didn't include in that area, so is...
Yes, we're approving that, or requesting approval.
So it's CO1, CO3, CO4, and CO5?
CO5 is informational only.
Oh, so it's CO1, CO3, CO, and three and four?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then, well, those weren't, these are recommending renewals, not the one and two.
Right, I did not include item number two.
Excuse me. CO05 also, sorry.
I was going to say, yeah.
Three, four, five.
Correct.
Okay. Very well. Okay, so is the motion that we approve item CO1, CO3, CO4, and CO5?
CO1 never came into it.
My understanding was we were simply at this juncture recommending the renewals of charters O3, O4, and O5.
Okay, very well.
Which is Darnell, Harriet Tubman, excuse me, the Learning Choice Academy.
Okay, very good.
That was our recommendation at this time.
And that was moved and seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any more questions?
Yeah.
Okay, and if we have some speakers, they can fill, yes. Yes.
The only question I have is, I have to trust the report, but it says, "District staff has analyzed the school's academic performance, financial viability, charter position, and results, and found that they have met the requirements." I don't even know anything now anymore about it than that you just read them. So substantially, or marginally, or, you know, just made it, you know, what, you know, I'm not in a position to say that you don't do your job. You're doing your job. You should. But when I ask in the past for renewals, I always ask for how did they perform relative to their charter statements? And I'm assuming that you know what they said, and that you've been saying this is okay. Should, for example, down the road, I get data that doesn't support that, I'm going to be kind of uncomfortable. So I would think it probably, and I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the board, I can only speak for myself, I think a summary of what that was, or the indications of their performance exceeded or matched, or whatever, would be appropriate during the renewal statement, rather than just we've reviewed them. I'll leave that, I mean, I'm not going to, I'm going to go vote no. I have to say, you do your job, and it must be well done. But at the same time, as far as the exhibit goes, it would be a lot easier if it said, if it specified, they had, they were strong in their finances, they had surplus of money at the end of operation, that they had academic performance that was maybe two grades over what they said they would do, or comparable with other district schools. You know, qualitative statements are valuable to me, and rather than micromanage, I'd sort of like to have that data here and say, oh, okay.
Okay. So are you asking this in a summary? I believe much of that is outlined in the renewals.
We do have a report.
Yeah.
You mean the 2,000 pages worth of renewals?
This is a action item of renewal of a charter. The content of the action item should be, in my opinion, and I'm only one, the board could have to tell you what they think, should be, how did they do? You say you reviewed how they'd done, and therefore you're saying it's okay, and I'm saying, so what was that? And I'm, you know, you know, while I agree that you have the right to say that, I also think it would be more specific and be more useful to me as a board member if I had the details of what you found.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we did have two speakers for item IO3. If you would like to speak, that's David Yeager and Cindy Dowdy. If you would like to speak, you may.
David Yeager, 6020 Hughes Street, San Diego, California, representing Darnell Charter School from the board, our board. In answer to Mr. DeBak's question, we did provide an additional letter outside of our charter renewal request that did specifically address our achievements over the course of our charter. Don't know if you had received that or not, but it was provided with our renewal.
I'm sure staff got it, but I didn't see it.
Okay. And Ms. Dowdy is not here at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more comments or questions for board members? Please vote. Okay, those items pass five to zero. Let's now look at item CO1. CO1 is the adoption of charter school memorandum of understanding with McGill School of Success. Superintendent Greer?
Thank you. Again, Rich will come up and explain this issue to you. It's, sure.
Good evening, board, Superintendent. That item is simply an adoption of memorandum of understanding with McGill School of Success. Their charter was amended at the last board meeting, so they needed to have their MOU re-updated. So again, it's just an update of their pre-existing MOU.
Okay. Is that in action?
It's in, it is in action.
Okay, any second, please? Second? Any more discussions or comments? Please vote. The item passes four zero. Item CO2 is to try to petition for Pacific American Academy Charter School. Superintendent Greer?
Again, same issue with staff. I'd like you to come up and explain and make a staff recommendation. Rich, is that you again? Who is it this time?
So I believe this petition was presented before, and there were some revisions, and so it's been brought back for approval.
Do we know what revisions have been made?
That I can't address, so.
Including a budget, I'm sure.
Yeah. Of course, including a budget.
Program manager in the Office of School Innovation and Choice, and this action, this item was actually brought forth initially by the legal office, at the last, at the last charter specific meeting, and now it's being brought forth again by the legal office.
So the legal office want to answer some questions for us? Somebody, please?
The, the report and review was prepared by Jose Gonzalez. I wasn't aware that the Charter Schools office wasn't working in conjunction with him. I can see if he is available, but I didn't work on this particular...
But the point, with all due respect, the point I'm trying to make to staff is, if you bring these reports to the board and ask the board to approve them, it's my expectations that staff would have justification as to what we're recommending and why, and if there were changes, we need to know what those changes were. We're asking for the board to make a serious commitment here as far as approving this proposal. And so if we've had this made once before, and it was not approved, and the board asked for changes and asked for additional information, I think we should specify what those changes were and provide that additional information, and the staff should be letting the board know why you now recommend that we approve this petition we asked before we did not. I mean, that's...
Superintendent, if it's okay with you, I will skip over CO2 to give them a chance to get Mr. Jose, to get Mr. Gonzalez here by the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
And I'll come back to CO2.
And also, just for point of information, I don't know about the rest of you, but I can't open the Pacific American Academy final report at all. I can do the one at the left, but not the one at the right, which is the final one. You know, maybe it just isn't even there. I don't know. I can't find it. Anyway, I'll leave it be.
Item...
Still, I'd like to, again, I, I don't know if I can open it or not, but I, that's, that's not the substantive issue for me. For me, it's, again, an issue.
We're going to come back to that one a little bit later.
Are we? Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item CO6, which is the public hearing for High Tech Middle, and that is, it is a public hearing item. There is no action required. There are no public speakers. Any comments from any staff member or board member?
This one on?
High tech.
High tech, high tech.
I move.
It's not a, it's just a public hearing.
Hearing only.
Yeah, I know. All right.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay.
Try and beat them.
Then we'll move on to item CO7, which is a public hearing renewal for Holly Drive. Again, this is a public hearing. We do have speakers, so we will start with the speakers.
Oh, look at this. What can I do with that?
Okay. If you want to see, you want to see mine?
Well, I'm only complaining about board docs.
Okay, anyway.
You know, I click on, I click on this thing, and I get the budget, and it's vertical, and it's, the report's horizontal.
Yeah, and I was able to pull it up.
So I got it, but no. You can probably rotate it.
I'm going to still, I'm going to call the speakers up. Please come up here and stand by the podium, and then you can come up once Mrs. Ward is back at her seat. Haran Abdul, Bishop Roy Dixon, Harry Cooper, Sheldon Harris, Sherri Morell, I think it's Renee Jones, Alicia Smith, Dan Faulkner, and Emmett Farrell. Okay? Okay, now, Bishop Dixon, and we have one subject, one group of people. The most they have is 15 minutes, so you can, you don't get three minutes apiece, you only get 15 minutes total. So some people can, you know, iterate points, but if you want to take a minute to make sure people understand that, okay? Ms. Ward was going to say it for 15 minutes. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. My name is Bishop Roy Dixon. HDLA, which is Holly Drive Leadership Academy, as you, as you know, have been renewed now once and twice, and we're here again for another renewal. I want to just basically say, first of all, that we found out that this was going to be on the agenda 11 o'clock yesterday, and, but even then, we sort of got some people together to show that this school is important. Anyone supporting Holly Drive Leadership Academy out there?
That's pretty good for short notice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And, and...
We apologize for that, and we'll fix that. Thank you.
All right. And, and, and so, just, just to reiterate, I went to Mr. Bass about over 10 years ago, and I, and I asked him what was happening at Lincoln High School. And Mr. Bass told me that what was basically happening is, he had no feet at school, and the kids he was getting, 70% of them was reading at a four and a half grade level. And so I set out to do, we set out to do something about that. And so we put together HDLA, and, and in the process, we invited any kid from any, no matter who they were, and now we have a lot of second language kids, but, but we invited them to come, and immediately, we was in reform because of the kids that we had. And, and the principal was going to talk about how we came out of reform. But, and again, I just wanted to let you know that our kids are learning, and if, and if, I don't know who's a, who's the principal at Lincoln now, but if they receive our kids as H, as High Tech High is doing, they, they, they are ending up as valedictorians and salutatorians at, at their high schools. So I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cooper.
I am Pastor Harry Cooper Jr., 1037 Fair Hill Terrace, Spring Valley, California. And it, the Holly Drive Leadership Academy is a joint venture that Bishop Dixon and I collaborated, two different denominations, but living on the same space and place, recognizing the need to have responsibility for our children. We're very much, and I'm sure you are familiar with the From Playground to Penitentiary Pipeline, and educating our children, making sure that they are knowledgeable about life issues, that they have technological competence, that they have adaptability to change, and are able to be able to do this at a high level. Our key components of the charter and incidents that we sought out to do, and for the last 10 years, with many obstacles in our pathway, have been able to do that, and look forward to another 10 years being able to do that, as one of the few schools that have ever gone into reform and come out of reform. We are, we went in, we educated, we came out. We then have an influx of second language students, which everybody knows across the district. There is a language barrier and adjustment period of time necessary to even bring those children up to speed, which we are doing. I want to enter into record a letter from Councilman Tony Young, who is the councilman for the fourth district in which Holly Drive Leadership Academy is found. And it says, "Dear school board members, I am writing to express my support of Holly Drive Leadership Academy located in my city council district. Since its inception in 1999, the academy has offered a whole, offered a viable option for parents seeking alternative education for their children through the smaller classroom setting. In addition, the school provides a safe environment for their students while reinforcing parental values. HDLA is a vital part of our community. I encourage your consideration of the positive impact the school has in and around the Lincoln Park neighborhood, and urge your continued support for this much-needed educational institution in the fourth district." And I'm going to give you this letter that it may be held in the records of this particular meeting. Simply put, I believe, as chair of the gang, as commissioner of gang prevention and intervention for the city of San Diego, as pastor of Southeast Community Church, as a former chair of the Urban League Educational Committee, that Holly Drive Leadership Academy is a viable educational opportunity for young students, and when you take anybody who, who some ever will, then you take them and you do your best to educate them, which is from the Latin word educare. And I believe that we are pulling out of our students the greatness that is within them, and look forward to your support in being able to do that as we move forward.
Hi, my name is Rajenae Jones. I am here to speak about the importance of my school, Holly Drive Leadership Academy. I have attended Holly Drive since fourth grade. When I first came to Holly Drive, I was nervous, nervous and scared. But once I sat at my desk to learn that first history lesson, I noticed two things about my new school. First, all the teachers at Holly Drive treat everyone, students and their family members, with respect and love. Second, the 10, the number 10 rule in the classroom at the bottom, remember at all times that we are family. I thought to myself, how can I call these people my family when I don't even know them? Then that next week, I said, wow, I couldn't believe it. My nervous and scared feelings had gone away and were replaced with feelings of being at home. I didn't know if you, I don't know if you know how it feels to go to a brand-new school and everyone already knows your name and your personality. The name of my school is Holly Drive, and it has its own special meaning, leadership. This is what most children need in their life. At most big schools, children may not experience that or feel important. They just may be another number. Feeling like you are an important part of something is what you need in your life. Respect of others, how to build a great self-esteem, to strive for being the best, how to care for others, and how to be honest. I value these things because every teacher at Holly Drive Leadership Academy has dedicated their time and themselves to, to show each student these qualities of a leader, and to work, to, and to work to be our community. Holly Drive is truly making this road a better place, and we are more than just a job to these teachers. We are theirs and yours future. Thank you, and have a nice day.
I should yield to her, but my principal has asked me to say a couple of words. My name is Harun Abdul Mubarak, 417 Ella Lane, San Diego, California, 92114. Madam President, Mr. Superintendent, and fellow board members, I've been an instructor at Holly Drive Leadership Academy since 1999. Like Brother Bishop has said, I have also seen us renewed twice. And... And to my dismay, I found out about the fact that we were having this public hearing today and that we really didn't have a lot of preparation. So what we did is we galvanized our parents, we galvanized our students and community leaders. And so we stand before you as a family, like Rajenay said. And this is one of the, one of the things that we try to breed in all of our staff members and all of our students, that we are a family and that we are a part of the community, a positive part of the community. And so I can stand here for the next minute and a half and talk about our academic achievement and where our test scores have gone over the last 10 years. They've gone up. In recent years, they have kind of trended downward. So we can argue about that with staff in terms of what we're doing. But I think Rajenay Jones, being able to stand before you with her shoulders high, looking you in the face, is a better indication of the type of job that my staff members and I are doing at Holly Drive. And I'll leave you with this. Many of my students over the years have told me what they want to do when they grow up. And they have said that they want to be a teacher. And what that does for me when I lay my head down at night is it lets me know that I've done a job right. So we expect positive consideration on all of your part. We expect you to notice the community involvement, to notice the parent involvement, and to love our children the way that we love our children. Thank you.
Let me clarify something. This is just a public hearing. You'll be back in about 30 days or so, is that correct? Staff, about 30 days is when the actual vote is. There is no vote today, it's just we're listening. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Father Emmett Farrell. I'm the pastor of St. Jude's Church, a thing called St. Jude's, trying to the western South Crest area of the city. And not actually directly involved in the Holly Drive Leadership Academy, but I do come from a parallel situation. We do have a, a private school at St. Jude's, which is preschool through 8th grade. And what I came to say is that I think our private and our charter schools really do provide something that is essential or very positive in our communities. Sometimes our numbers are not big, but our dedication is. And we, I think if, what I would ask you to consider this afternoon, as the board of the San Diego Unified School District, is to take into consideration some of the problems that might exist in the school, work with the staff, because I think if you do that, I think they will come up with good answers and they'll be able to meet your standards. So I just ask you to work with them, okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Alicia Smith. I am the principal at Holly Drive Leadership Academy. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to speak about our academy. We are a K-8 charter school located in the inner city of San Diego. We've been around since 1999 and I've been the principal there since 2000. We have, we've been in existence and we've continued to be in existence because we are raising student achievement. Just like the other schools in our community, the challenges to educate the students in the inner city are great. However, that's the main reason we are here. The reason we opened the school is we wanted to assist San Diego Unified in raising reading achievement, to be a place where students can go if they were falling by the wayside, not reaching academic achievement, or not being able to survive in the regular typical traditional setting. So we seek out those type of students. And we've been successful to that end. Many of our students leave our school, become valedictorians at your high schools, and come back and see us and talk about the great education that they received at Holly Drive. No one's immune to the declining, declining economy and we know that's going to be an issue as far as the viability of a school so small. But we are prepared and will rise to the challenge. Holly Drive, financially, we feel we're going to be viable and we presented information that backs that. We also can comment, of course, in the future when we need to, about our fiscal viability. And short, I, I want to be able just to summarize some of our highlights over the last charter term. When we were originally open, our, our API was only a 504. And in the last charter term, we were able to increase student achievement of an API of 730. So we're very proud, very proud of that. We also had a state ranking of a 4 in 05, 06 school year, and we met all of our AYP, which is adequate yearly progress in all the years except for one. Compared to our four closest neighboring schools, we have, the other three schools in our neighborhood are in school reform and we are not in school reform anymore. Holly Drive has had some veteran teachers who have had a track record of increasing student achievement. To this end, we have faith in this board that you believe in school choice, that you believe in education for all students, and that all children don't believe that they should be in a box. We don't educate all kids the same, and we believe that you believe in school choice and that's why we're here. We look forward to another five years of learning and working together and learning from each other. Thank you so much for your consideration today.
Well, my name's Sherri Morrell and I'm the kindergarten teacher at Holly Drive. And I live at 9249 Carthay Circle, Spring Valley, 91977. There's so much that could be said and I want to keep it to what this forum is actually about, but I just want to tell you that our school is very unique. The environment may not look pretty yet. We've had to work a lot on infrastructure. There's so much going on there and it's really easy to misunderstand how we do things and the like. The fact that we're a family is really special. The fact that we are so small creates special problems in services and finances and things, but it is so worth it. What we're doing is so good for the neighborhood. It is just, it's very important that we're there, okay? That's all I can say is it's very, very important we're there. And the teachers even opened up their cars and got bigger cars to bring people here because it's a poor neighborhood without transportation. So that even speaks volumes to me, so, thank you.
Thank, thank you. Board members, that's it, it was your time, yes. Board, board members, this is a, a public hearing only, there's no action, but do you want me to comment? Okay, Dr. Evans?
Yes, I just wanted to comment very briefly. There are a lot of ways to measure the success of a school, looking at the budget, test scores and so forth, but I don't think there's anything more important than, and more impressive than seeing a group of people who are community members, teachers, principal, parents, students, and who on such short notice are able to show up and support their school. So I just want to say I'm very, very impressed by that.
Akamara? Well, I beg to differ. To be honest with you, I think that what I found impressive, first of all, just showing up, I agree was impressive, but that's not a reason to approve a charter. What I'm hearing and, and what your track record shows is a history that is committed to developing children who can go out into the world, and what do we say over here? Succeed in their choice of college and career in order to lead and participate in the society of tomorrow. And I think that's what Holly Drive is all about, so.
Okay, and again, thank you. I see Bishop McKinney here and Reverend Wells here and the community is here, so it's good to see you. Information item only and keep up the good work and we'll see you in about 30 days. The next item on the agenda is the charter petition, public hearing for Ifton High School. This again is another public hearing. We have some speakers for this.
Hear my audience?
We'll give you a minute too.
I wonder how big the school is.
Do you have any more speakers for Ifton?
It's like 130, I think. I guess that's what my.
If you would exit quietly, we can continue with the meeting, I'd appreciate that. The following people wish to address us concerning the Ifton High School. Jamie Espito, I think it is.
Espisita.
Yes, thank you. Mawa Quibble, Adir Omar, Savan Mohammed, Shari Adams, Sandro Larson, Sandro Martinez, and Ardir Haman M. If you would please come up front. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. Oh, this is. Okay. Let me just go through this list again really quickly. I have eight people and I only see about four over there. Jamie Espito, Mava Quibble, Adir Omar, Safain Mohammed, Shari Adams, Sandro Larson, Sandro Martinez, and Abdir Haman M. Okay, if they're not here, then each speaker down over here will get three minutes. You may begin, please.
My name is Sufian Mohammed, 3810 Wyon Avenue, San Diego, California, 92105. Madam President, Miss Vice President, Superintendent, and the members of the board, good evening. We are, as a parent and as a member of Somali community in San Diego, and as a resident of city height, I stand here to support the petition of the Ifton High School Charter. Before I go to this, I want to mention one side note that is very important to our community. Many communities are dealing with educational gaps in how to improve students and their education. We, as a Somali community, have added an extra problem that we think merits the, a little attention. And that is that we are the first and second generation that are here. And it has been a problem for the past couple of years, some discontinuity between parents and the children, or at least the teenagers. And because the lack of communication and the understanding between the parents and the teenagers, there has been many students or many teenagers that had dropped out of high schools. This presents a very big challenge to our community. It also presents a challenge to the society and to the city as well. It is not a problem that we face alone by ourselves. A couple of years ago, we came here in front of you, we asked a charter high school, elementary charter high school, and you guys so courteously had approved that. And since then, there has been a sense of hope and a lot of progress that that elementary school had brought to the Somali San Diego community. In fact, many parents are happy today for the simple fact that they are able to communicate teachers of the, in the school and understand the process of the education of their children. This, in a sense, was a void or were missing before we had this opportunity. We had exactly also a similar problem in the students at the age of high school and teenagers. What happens is to us is that since the parents, most of the parents are educated or were raised in a different country, in Somalia. Students, when they come here, they are cultured or inculcated or socialized in a different way that parents do not understand, at least when it comes to the public school. That presents a challenge to us because parents do fail to at least be able to follow the steps of the child, understand how they go through education. Do I only have three minutes?
Can you wrap up? No, that's it, just three minutes.
Can I?
Just finish your last statement, please.
So we would be very appreciative and indeed it will help us if you guys, if the board members consider the fact that we need this school and we need it really, really, you know, very importantly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jamie Espisita, 5700. Jamie Espisita, 5700 Baltimore Drive, number 242 La Mesa, 91942. I have been a teacher at Ifton Charter School for three years, since our doors opened in 2006, and I have witnessed many significant changes since that very first year. We've had great gains academically. The school is financially responsible, our resources are sufficient without being indulgent. And as far as the community, I think there's a saying, an African saying that says, "It takes the village." Ifton Charter School is the epitome of this saying. Parents and students and teachers work together to create a powerful and meaningful academic program and community for learning. As a new K-8 charter, we certainly face challenges, but together with the needs of our unique students in mind, we work through each trial and hardship and learn from our mistakes. If the community wishes for a high school, then we must rise to the occasion, offering support, fostering dreams, and doing our part to create a path for success for these students. And to quote Margaret Mead, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Abdrahman. I am a 3rd grader in Ifton Charter School. I stand here today as Dr. King's dream. I am the hope and the change. I have a dream to graduate Ifton High School. Please support me. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adil Omar. I am Ifton student. I'm in 5th grade. I stand here today as Dr. King's dream. I am hoping change. I have a dream to graduate, to graduate from Ifton High School. Please support me. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Manera Abdi. I live at 4078.
Thank you.
My name is Manera Abdi. I live at 4078 47th Street in San Diego, California, 92105. I totally believe in the, in the way Ifton Charter School has bridged the gap between the Somali culture and the culture that our children are growing up in. The purpose of this school is to bridge the two cultures, the interrogation and to interrogate to the integration in their awareness, building strong self-esteem, identify development and appreciation of diversity, skill and knowledge development, and to also assist children to be motivated enough to reach their potential and become success-oriented and productive citizens of this nation. And I believe that Ifton Charter School is doing that with, is fully doing that. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Sandra Martinez and I'm the instructional leader for Ifton Charter K-8. I reside at 2471 Bali Cove, San Diego, 92139. I just wanted to share my experiences with you after working with Ifton Charter for a year. I have found that the community is very committed to the education of the students. In fact, we have had a good group of teachers that have been working hard and our scores went up 114 points in the K-8 area, in the elementary. We have parents that want to see a continuation of this kind of success for their students. And you know that students who are happy and productive are going to be much better members of a society. This is what I think the community is wanting, just the opportunity to have a school where they can fully participate, where their students can feel comfortable, where they have a high self-esteem, sometimes a little too high right now, but they feel good about going to school every day, about being productive. every day, about being productive, about learning how to speak English. Our scores went up very, you know, quite a bit also, but you can see that on the, online on the California website. So, you'll see that we have been working hard. We want to continue the same success in the high school. I think that the energy and the momentum that the community has right now, we should harness that, and we should allow them the opportunity to continue, to see if we can continue to support our students in learning. So, thank you very much.
Adal, is that it? Okay. Thank you very much. Board members, this was informational only, public hearing. Okay. Any Board member comments?
Yeah, I, I have to in fairness say that I have recently come, and I decide to do this not to hurt anyone's feelings or anything else, but I'm, I just personally feel I can no longer support ethnically isolated schools, you know, particularly in high school. I think it's important that the students learn to acculturate and become, you know, reach out, and that that's what our schools are for. For that reason, while I applaud the work that you've done in the elementary school grades, where perhaps a more sheltered environment is appropriate, I just, I have just as a personal resolve, not about your issue individually, but I really believe that it's not the purpose of American public education to be so narrowly focused, and that ultimately, it does not serve the students.
Any other Board comments? Mr. DeBak?
I just have a comment because I'm a kind of a spot checker of things. And I looked at your budget, and it's the five-year budget that's in the plan. There's some kind of typo I just pointed out. The first line says five-year budget, 2010 to 2015. It says if and how, and then the next line below it goes grades A-K5, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 12. The only one that would apply would be the 912. So, I'm not sure why you included the grades that are in your other part of your organization. I saw the chart where you're splitting the management responsibilities over two operations, but when we're looking at the proposal for the high school, I think the only part of the budget we'd be interested in would be the high school portion. So, I didn't go further, but it seems to me like there may be some errors in this projection. I appreciate the five-year part. That's, makes it very valuable to look at. And I'm not going to judge the content, but it just looks to me like there's some typos that need to be looked at.
Mr. Barrera?
Yeah, I just, I respect Ms. Nakamura's position, but I do disagree with it, and I just want to, just, I just want to appreciate the commitment of folks from your community and your school community to public education in this country and to your effort to integrate, you know, your, your kids, to, to keep your culture strong, but to integrate your kids into, into, into the culture of this country. So, I do, I appreciate the effort that you're making.
And so, we thank you for coming, okay? The next agenda item is Item C9, which is adoption of a resolution to accept the voluntary surrender of Cortez Hill Academy Charter. This is an action item. The resolution is in, in your packet.
Cortez Hill?
Yes.
Oh, this is the rescinding of...
Yes.
Yeah, more approval.
Yeah.
So, I have two moves.
Second.
Thank you. Two moves in one second.
Did you want me to present this?
I don't think there's any question if they voluntarily want to rescind their charter, and I see no reason for us to force them to continue, especially if they're on financial straits.
Okay.
So, it's, it's pretty clear why.
That's, if I can just frame the issue, and then Superintendent, you can respond. But I know that we have in the past been stuck with the bill for charters that have folded, and, you know, that's $600,000 is my understanding in this particular case.
Roughly 162,000.
162,000? Okay. Because I had heard 600,000 somewhere. But that that is, we're usually stuck holding the bag. I haven't heard of a charter that's folded yet, that we haven't been able to, that we haven't been able to avoid the consequences of that loss of funds. It's good to hear. It's that, it's hard to believe that, I would say that that is that low, but it's, okay. So, now I put my concern on the table, so anybody, Superintendent?
Just going to speak to it, please.
Yes, thank you. I have discussed their financial obligations with James Sincias, our chief finance officer, who has looked into this, this issue. They are a nonprofit organization. The funding came from third party. James does not believe, at this point in time, that the district will have any financial obligation to cover that deficit. However, we continue, we will continue to monitor that, and I will inform you if there, if I hear anything different from him.
Independent, okay. Not an arm of the district charter.
Right. And that's what James said, but again, I'm, I'm not sure about your background and your past experience with it. I was just giving you that bit of an update, and if that changes, of course, we'll let you know.
I can remember the school that went under, I can't remember if it was arm of the district or not.
It was arm of the district charter, so I think that's the difference.
I'm not sure it was.
Yes.
But let's clear that up, and we'll find, we'll find out one way or the other. I'm just putting it out there.
All right. Mr. DeBak had a comment, then Mr. Barrera?
Well, that, my point was, the charter schools owes the district 150,000, and that's not the same money as they are in, let's say, in liability for other things. You're only talking about their liability to us, you know, and the argument about whether we have to back their losses is an argument that we've had before, which we ended up having to do.
Yeah.
And, you know, some, it may end up being a lawsuit, if somebody will say, "Well, you granted the charter, you got the responsibility." I'm not going to get into whether that's legal or not legal, but, you know, as long as we're watching these charters, what I'm interested in is I have to commend them on their responsibility of identifying their problem and asking to back out of the charter, because in the past, some people have been very stubborn about this and said, "Well, someone will bail us out," and it never happened. So, you know, to the people who are watching that from this charter, I think they would be very responsible. And, and I think that was a pretty good move on their part to identify that they have a problem and, and recognize it. So, thanks them for that.
Barrera?
Yeah, and I just say, which, I just would ask that with any, especially a renewal petition or even, you know, a new petition, that if there are concerns, you know, that your staff has about the financial viability of a, of a school, please be clear and direct and upfront with us about that, yeah?
I've shared that through a memorandum, not only for Cortez Hill, but a previous charter, public hearing today.
Yeah.
You can stay there. We skipped Item CO2, so let's revisit that item, please. I think the legal counsel is here now. Could you shed some light on this? Oh, I'm sorry, we got a vote. I'm sorry, I didn't call for the vote on the...
Move approval of the withdrawal of the charter.
It was moved in second.
Already moved in second.
I just saw it. Call for the vote. Okay. Pass 5-0. Okay, Item CO2. Item CO2 is Pacific American Academy Charter School.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. The, the first time that this matter came for you for the public hearing, the budget was attached, the budget information was attached. Then when it came back to you for action on the second reading, a lot of revisions were made, a lot of issues were taken care of. The only thing that was left was just to have your board act on it. There were no problems from staff. Staff was recommending approval. However, when the petitioner submitted the revised electronic budget, they didn't attach the original budget information that was unchanged. At that time, Mr. DeBak said he wanted to see the budget information, so your board put off acting on it so that we could provide that budget information. That budget information has been provided. When this agenda item was submitted for processing, for reporting to the board, it included a reference to where the budget was found. However, that reference apparently doesn't appear on your agenda. But in any event, the budget information is there, and it starts at page 164.
I can't get it.
And there are no, there are no revisions to this charter. The only reason it's coming back now is so that it includes the budget information.
Yeah, well, it doesn't click up for me, so I, I mean, I have no access to it.
Yeah. But when it came back to you, there were no issues, no operational issues.
No, no. It was the budget.
Right. You wanted to see the budget, John, and it's...
Well, I didn't, because it's not here.
Well, it's, it's there.
That's okay. If staff agrees that the budget's viable, who am I to get in there?
There were no financial issues.
John's right. I don't know about everyone else. I can't get it open on my PDF file.
I've got both. I can open both of them. I'm just better technologically than all of you guys, that's all.
I'm not a computer guy, so I can't help you with that.
You know, I went to South Africa, and I couldn't click well.
What is the pleasure of the board, please?
Can I, can I just ask staff? I think, I just want to hear a little bit more from you, I guess, about what, what is it about this petition that gives you confidence that this is going to be a successful school? And I know that's a broad question, but I need to hear a little bit more about why you're recommending approval of this petition.
Well, I'll tell you what I do. I'm one of the lawyers for the district, and our job is to receive these petitions and then send off to the various departments the petition for their review, comment, approval, recommendations for changes or otherwise. So, each department has had a chance to look at this, the instructional people, the financial people, the special ed people, the facilities people, and nobody recommended or had any problem with the charter as revised. Your board originally had some concerns, Ms. Nakamura, about the focus of the charter on the Hawaiian-Pacific Islander theme, and I had the same concerns because state law requires that the charters be open to anyone, and anytime you have a charter whose educational curriculum is tailored to a specific national orange group or ethnic group, in our opinion, that's legally impermissible because it tends to exclude everybody else.
Well, then, how do we, how do we go around approving Iftin, then?
Well, we're not there yet, and I will have, our office will have recommendations on that subject that I really should reserve until a later point.
Okay.
But in any event, with respect to this charter, we made those same comments or those same, we expressed those same concerns, and they did, in fact, revise the curriculum, change the entire focus so that it's a charter that is generic and focused and designed to appeal to all students. And it's no longer a Hawaiian-focus-only charter. So, with those changes at the last hearing, that information was presented to your board. There were no operational issues. The only reason it came back is because the budget pages were inadvertently left out in the electronic section that came to you.
Okay. I guess that's... It's, it's, I appreciate it, but, and maybe it's somebody from the instructional side that needs to, that needs to talk to us a little bit. I mean, a charter school is serious business. We're, you know, we're, by us approving a petition, we're entrusting the education of kids, you know, to, to the, to that school, and I just, I just, I need to hear a little bit from the instructional side why the staff has confidence that, that these schools, that these kids are going to be properly educated at this school.
All right. And that, you should have that concern with every charter that comes before you.
Yeah, sure.
Now, I'm not sure that you've asked the same question of every charter proponent. Obviously, you're free to do that anytime you want to do that.
I'm asking about this one.
Now, in this one, since you're raising it for the first time, you will need to have curriculum people here. I'm not going to tell you what the curriculum is of all about, because I'm not the expert on that subject. I'm your lawyer. So, you will need curriculum people to tell you that. Now, if you're going to do that, you have to put it off at least one more time. Now, these folks have learned...
I do not have any, any motions or seconds on this item. Yes, Superintendent?
Yeah, and that's what...
Were you done?
No.
That's what I would recommend if you have these concerns, and what I would say to you is, during my short tenure in the district, we have a different board, we're new. That has not been a question that has been raised of staff before. Before, it's been, it's my, my own opinion, I'm speaking for myself, not being critical of the board or anyone else. It was, the, the, the culture and philosophy appeared to be, to the staff, that when a charter was presented to this board, that the staff's role was to make sure that our legal department said that the charter met compliance with the law. And that basically passed that, we looked at the budget to see whether or not we felt like the budget was there to support the staff and the program, because we knew that flow-through dollars would go to the school on a per pupil basis, just like they do here. So, we calculate one per 25 kids, and so we, we look at doing that. But we never felt like, and I've never felt like since I've been here, that this board asked the staff to take a look at the programmatic value that was being presented, and that we then would say to the board, "We recommend you not approve this particular charter because it is serious business and because we have serious reservations about the ability of these folks to deliver on what they are proposing." Just as I'm saying that, I could, could say to you, we could go back and take a look at the charter schools that we already have in place, and we could see how effective they have been, and it has not been our position heretofore to recommend to you that we place a charter on notice, that you're not making adequate progress, or that you're failing a large percentage of your kids, or they're not doing as well as we want them to do, and you need to improve or, or face the consequences with the board. We've not taken that approach.
If I may follow up on the Superintendent's comments, Mr. DeBak? The charter law is very strict on when a charter can be disapproved. The grounds for disapproval are very narrow. With respect to the curriculum, your board would have to find that the educational program is unsound, or that the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the educational program. So, when it goes out for review, the curriculum people provide a response that the educational program is sound or unsound. Obviously, if it is unsound, the recommendation will come back to you to deny the charter petition. On the other hand, if the curriculum folks say that the, the educational program is sound, then that really ends the discussion, because your board would have no basis for denying the charter on that issue. Now, there may be differences of opinion as to the themes of educational programs, whether this one is more desirable than that one, but those are really are matters that are not appropriate for consideration in either granting or denying a charter application.
Well, we have, Ms. Nakamura is next, and then Mr. DeBak.
You know, previously, and actually, Dr. Greer, your perception of charters, I think, was pretty much correct. We were really in the wild, wild west of charters. They were just starting up. There were a lot of people that were very frustrated with our schools and the direction that they were headed, and the whole concept of charters was that they would be, you know, there was, it was a time of experimentation and where we were trying to figure out, you know, what was going to, what was going to work and what was not going to work. But I think in my time and experience as a board member, I, having seen a number of school, of schools fail, and where we did have to pay for those, and having seen a number of schools where I have just felt that the, the instructional, you know, program was, you know, impermissibly narrow or whatever, where children were harmed, and I just don't, and it, on one hand, I'm, I'm glad I'm taking this stand on Pacific American Academy, because I've got friends in this group that I'm sure are terribly hurt by this, and I am very sorry for that, but if I can stand up and say this to you, then I can stand up and say it to anyone. And I think that's important. I think that is tremendously important, that we had an actual set of guidelines, Mr. Gonzalez, that the board developed. It was a charter school, which I had recently sent to me. It was a list of guidelines that the board developed in an effort to get their arms around this, where we started talking about what kinds of charters we want in this district, and where we want them, and what were our, what was our ability to make those decisions. And I know that other school districts have similarly, you know, have either adopted them or have simply, you know, kept charters more under control. And I, I guess that I'm looking for more options like that. I want more definition about what we allow in this district and what we do not, because I have seen too many schools that have been racially isolated, where children did not get what they needed, and I really don't think that that's a, I just have a real problem.
On, on that issue, you know, your concerns were heated by this petition, by these petitioners, and they get them in the charter to hear those deficiencies.
But I don't see anything further, any outreach or anything else in the very title of it. Pacific American Academy, the fact that they haven't changed the name of it, to me, is still, you know, indicates that, that it's exclusionary. You know, the very name of it says, you know, we only, that pretty much means Asians.
Yeah, I understand, but at the last meeting, representatives were here from the school, and they spoke and addressed the board on that very issue. And, you know, I can't repeat verbatim what they said, but they assured your board that that was no longer the focus, and on the charter...
Well, Mr. Gonzalez, I guess I need more than reassurances, because we looked at the charter school petition, and they had a very minimal amount of time, effort, and the charter school petition, and they had a very minimal amount of time, effort, and money going out to that type of outreach, so, you know.
But what I was about to say, that their original charter did contain provisions indicating that that was a Hawaiian Pacific Islander theme. We told them, our office told them, "No, you cannot do that, because you're focusing on one group," and they deleted all those provisions, so that the charter that you have before you now has deleted all the references to a Hawaiian Pacific Islander-themed school.
No, it hasn't. The Pacific American Academy, with a seashell on the front of it, still pretty much a Hawaiian-themed school, as far as I'm concerned. But my question is this, what I would ask this board and my colleagues to do, which I think is very important, is that we have a meeting where we revisit this concept of developing guidelines for charter schools within the district, that we really renew.
We'd be happy to help you out with that, but you, yeah. In the future also, if you want staff to be here to address the substantive issues, like facilities, special ed, they can be here and talk to you about the curriculum. But you need to understand that, this isn't me, not my personal preference, but state law has prescribed some very narrow grounds for denying a charter petition. And those grounds are, I'll tell you right away, it's an unsound program, unsound educational program, or the petitioners are unlikely to successfully implement it, or that it contains some unlawful provisions, or it's fiscally not doable. They're very, very narrow grounds.
Well, I, but there are another school districts. We'll schedule a meeting, and then we will expect staff to be here to answer questions.
All right, so.
Okay, Ms. DeBeck, and then Ms. Barrera.
Just to make sure that the charter office is clear, in future renewals.
We will make them clear, okay?
And new applications, you will want the departmental staff to be here in case you have questions on the departmental issues.
Okay, very good.
All right, is that correct?
Okay. First of all, we've done this. So the point is, there was a time when we started out the charters, where, in fact, the first charter that came before me, I voted no on the educational program. It was a charter school, San Diego, one of the successful charters we have. But they had missed some of those elements, and there was questions about their game plan, okay? Where is their business plan? You know, I said, you know, "I'm not going to just do it because you want a charter. I want to know what you plan to do." They did that and came back responsive. We had, over time, we had, I call it, a very aggressive charter office that used to rule on a lot of stuff. Some of it was, I'll call it controversial, but I know the narrow discussion of the elements, okay? The key to me is that the charter office, and this depends on what the boards charges the charter office, it went from that kind of, "Let's look at every little thing," to, "Okay, it's a charter, let them meet the requirements," and now it's up to the board to review and look for, let's say, what they think will be a problem with the curriculum. So basically, the curriculum people just, they weren't a part of it. I think we need to get to a balance of that, and I think that I would, at the very minimum, expect an endorsement. Not, you know, I would say to the, that the element says that there is a viable educational program, and that's one of the elements, that I believe, that the instructional division, whoever might be at the time, whatever organization, should say, "We reviewed this charter, and we believe they meet the standards, are under their criteria of the state." I'm not going to ask them all the little pieces of it, but I'm going to say, "Okay, you're the people that supervise instruction in the district, you think it's acceptable, I'll go for it." That would be true also for the finances, and as far as I'm concerned, the element should be that all those state criteria, there's got to be somebody within our district that's a professional person paid by the district to review it, that does it. Whether it's the charter office or not, we got all caught up in this, like, it was only the charter office that responds. I think it's a routing job. I think it's a mutual responsibility of all of our staff that are experts in the separate parts of it. One would be facilities, for example, adequate facilities, okay? Finally, I found, by the way, I did find, that I could click on it and wait long enough, I did get a cash flow chart, or cash flow forecast. That's the budget. Well, I could make a cash flow forecast, and it wouldn't be a budget. So I, you know, that's another piece. I see the budget, but I also know that no one in this district has okayed it.
Well, that's not accurate, John. I think.
Who okayed it?
Each department reviews a charter, and each department.
They ought to have an audit trail, shouldn't you? Shouldn't you say?
Yes, 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 John.
With no audit trail.
They get, the charter petitions, whether renewal or, in the first instance, are submitted to each department, for example. Facilities, finance, special ed, curriculum.
Mr. Gonzalez, then, what should happen is that routing sheet should be included with the board packet in the future.
All right, that can be done.
Okay. Mr. Barrera, please.
So, so I guess where I would get to is, and I understand the difficulty in that there's sort of, you know, narrow grounds, you know, for the district to look at, but the question of, sort of, you know, how do we evaluate whether a petitioner is demonstrably unlikely to succeed in carrying out their educational program? And here, and the reason that I'm concerned about that is, the educational program itself strikes me as something that is, you know, fairly easy to develop if what you do is you get a consultant that writes these applications for a living. And so what you've got on paper is a sound educational program. So then, you know, it seems like we do have to have some analysis of whether the petitioner is likely to succeed, and I understand that the law is saying, you've got to show, you've got to, you've got to show that they're demonstrably unlikely to succeed, but I guess, what are the criteria that we use to look at whether the petitioner, you know, is likely to succeed at the educational program?
Well, what staff does is you look at the qualifications of the petitioners, the original board members, the people that are coming forward to you. Most of these petitions are submitted by educators, and they have on the boards persons in responsible positions in the community, teachers, former principals. So all of the background and qualifications of the petitioners typically indicate that they are reasonable, responsible people with experience in education, and there's nothing to indicate that they cannot successfully run a small school, because they in the past have done so. Now, should you get a petition, with all due respect to other professions, that is submitted by persons with no experience in education, then in that case, staff would come back, probably telling you that it's unlikely that these petitioners will successfully implement the charter, because they have no experience in education. And so what you have to do at some point is trust what your staff is telling you. It's their job to look at the different charter elements and tell you, "We have no objections to it. They are familiar with the charter law, the issues, they've looked at many of these, and when they have an objection, they will tell you." When the iften charter comes back, you will have a lively discussion on the focus of that charter. You will be put in the position of having to decide whether you really do want to approve it or not. You will get the discussion that you're asking for today.
We're not asking for discussion, we're asking for you to evaluate the law and give us a recommendation.
And I will do that. And you will either follow my recommendation or ignore it at that time.
All right, first of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, because with your presentation, I've actually learned more about the process of approving charters. And I actually walked into this meeting today saying to someone, "On what basis are we even allowed to disapprove a charter application?" And so I appreciate your legal explanations about all of this, and I think that what...
That's the only one that I have.
Okay. The, what I think that the board needs to do is, in consultation with you and others, is get a clear description of what we are able to do within the law. And I know that the law is fairly narrow in what it says, but even within that, trying to find whatever wiggle room we can find in terms of how we can interpret and evaluate. And then once we have that, then we'll be able to come into meetings and say, "Okay, there are these seven or eight criteria, these departments have reviewed it, these are the reasons, and it's all on one sheet where we can see that we approved it."
There are a number of ways that we can do that. First of all, you know, we could send you written information on that. We could provide an oral presentation.
Well, let's just do that in a discussion, so we can.
And thirdly.
Now is not the time to discuss, we're going to do it.
Thirdly, when you do get a recommendation for denial of a renewal petition, or a recommendation for denial of an original charter petition, you will have in that board report a list of all the statutory grounds for denial, and then you will have facts that fit within each one of those grounds, or the applicable ground, and then you will be asked to make findings of fact supporting your decision that fits within one of the legal grounds. And that's necessary, because the courts require that.
I'm not as concerned, I mean, I think that's very true, but I'm not as concerned about the disapproval when the staff is recommending that. I'm more concerned about just a generic recommendation for approval on us being careful.
We'll have a board discussion about our charter status.
I have one last comment, and that is that San Diego Unified has more charters than any other school district in the state, I believe. Los Angeles may have recently surpassed this, but we have more charters. So other school districts are finding a way or have some criteria for, you know, exercising their authority, other than just rubber stamping everything that comes in front of them. And, you know, I would like the benefit of knowing what those other school districts are doing, what is the litigation, and while you say the law is very narrow, you know, there's apparently some breadth somewhere. I need a little breathing room on these.
You don't need to respond to that now.
Okay. Do you have a meeting somewhere?
No, but I think the time for to have this discussion would be when we discussed the charter, charter office people available, too, for their comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we done?
We, I think we got that horse. Anyway, the next item is D O one. There was not a motion on that particular item.
No, there wasn't.
There was no motion, and there was no second at all, so we'll move on. Item D O one is the board discussion action regarding.
President Jackson, if I could interject, is the, there were two options that were laid out on that last agenda item. One was to ask the staff to come back because of the difficulty in accessing the information, to put it on a future agenda. If that's the reason for the lack of action, then that's fine. Otherwise, there, under the law, the board is required to act on this petition, and so there needs to be a board action at some point, up or down. The lack of a motion would be deemed a denial of the petition, which would invoke an appeal process.
This is what on O eight? Okay, this is on O two.
No, I was just, I wanted clarity on the.
Okay, so since there is no motion, and that is...
Right, President Jackson, I'll move to accept this petition.
I'll second it.
It's a motion, seconded. Any more discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm going on the assumption that Jose's comments that the financial information was reviewed. The question that we raised last time, was there a budget? And you said in your testimony that they provided a budget. What you didn't say until just now was that the financial department has reviewed the budget and that it's okay, because you told me I was wrong, and because I made the assumption they hadn't. So if, with that representation, that the budget people have looked at the budget and considered it to be a viable budget, then I'm seconding the motion. And, you know, I have to rely on staff's assertions of what happened. The absence of a budget doesn't mean it was approved. The rewriting of the budget doesn't mean it was approved. So when you say, when I say I'd like an audit trail, I really mean that. I really mean that when an application for a charter comes here, that one of the elements of the application that I'm acting on, where staff has reviewed the program and recommends the curriculum, or approved the curriculum, the staff has reviewed the budget and approved the budget, you know, when all the elements are there, which somebody has reviewed. Then if that's the case, that's the audit trail I'm looking for. I'm not going to go out there and review every charter, although I do.
Can you bring the audit trail of this particular charter to us? And in that way, I don't know, I mean, it's a motion and seconded, but I know there are some concerns about other parts of it.
That's a feature.
Right. So if that's, but I think that part is very important to the board, to actually see the audit trail for the charter.
Yeah, and I can, I know that you have felt, for good reason, that this particular agenda item has gone on long enough, but a big part of my experience with charter petitions was when I was with the Orange County Office of Education, and county boards hear appeals and have to apply the exact same standards, and we did it in the exact same way. Appeals came to legal, it was sent out to the department, so that's a very common way of doing it. Another thought that I had is that, in that role, I also have experience with appeals to the State Board of Education when a county board denies an appeal. And the State Department of Education has a template that they use that breaks down each of the required elements, because they have to review these things using the exact same standards and the same basis for approval or denial. That breaks down some specifics, so I know that's available on the State Board's website on agenda items, and that's an example that I could provide, that if it's a format that the board would, that or a variation of it, would be something that the board is thinking about in terms of what to see regarding the staff analysis, that can be done, too. So I'll provide an example of that.
Any other board comments or questions or discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Doctor Evans.
I just want to know if, what other piece of information we may be waiting for at this point? I mean, Mr. DeBeck made the point about the budget, and then I guess related to that is if we vote, if we do not approve it today, does that mean that it would come up again with further information, or would this be just simply voted down?
If you don't approve this today, they would be, I mean, if you vote it down, if the motion doesn't pass, they would be notified that their petition was denied and that they have a right to appeal it to the County Board of Education.
Let's vote.
All right. Well, I don't see insufficient grounds for disapproving.
Okay, anyway, there's no more questions or discussions, please.
I have one comment.
Yes, Superintendent?
The comment was, it was a good comment, I thought, maybe. If you have changed, I thought Catherine, board member Nakamura, made a good point. If you have changed your curriculum and you have changed your focus, do you still keep your name? And I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just, I just thought that was a very good question, because your name does insinuate a particular area of focus that you have said to the board that you have changed. So my question to our attorney is, could the board approve this with an express concern about the name and a request that that be a consideration for name change be made? I'm just asking, could that happen?
Yes, I think they could. The, I believe Jose's report says the board can approve, can deny, or can approve with conditions, and then you have legal authority to approve up to five years. So you could approve with that concern expressed, you could approve for a shorter period of time with requirement to report back on their, the success of their efforts to have a student population that reflects the student in the local community. There are options between just straight-up and down vote.
I'm just, I was just asking, thank you, President Jackson.
Okay.
I move for...
It's already, it's already? Everybody's voted.
All right. Ready? Okay.
Okay, so it passes four one. Okay, item D O one, please.
Prove.
Well, can we get some conversation about it first?
It's a board discussion.
Oh, it's a motion and a second.
Okay.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we realized in the board item, and we've talked about this more, is that there's a very clear recommendation regarding the second of the two items, the Civic Center Act, that the board asked us to look into at a prior meeting. The first one, on the issue of multi-year leases or multi-year use by charter schools, we needed to get more information on that and get back to you, as we've reported. It is allowable. It's not common here, it is done in other districts around the state. And what I laid out in a memo was three basic options, that you could offer multi-year use agreements or leases, kind of under the Prop 39 format and at the Prop 39 rates, or go, which some other districts do, and we, I think, have, the staff could say we have some isolated examples of some schools that are more of a market value-type rate and more traditional lease, or something between the two. What we kind of concluded in the terms of a recommendation is that the presumption would be, we would offer multi-year use under the Prop 39 umbrella, primarily because we have a lot of charter schools that are fairly stable in the district, and most of our charter schools are, a very large percentage of our students are district residents. And so the incentive for one of those schools to enter into a multi-year lease would be, would kind of go away if the rates were higher than Prop 39, so it would give them an incentive to just do the year-to-year approach, which is exactly the opposite of what the board's interest was. So that's kind of where we are on that. We think, I think it would be good to, because all of these would come back to the board anyway, it would be good to give the staff discretion in certain circumstances to recommend a more traditional lease, but that's our recommendation.
Okay. So I think that, well, this is an item for action, I mean, you're gonna, we're gonna bring this up when we, so you find that we can do it. gonna bring this up when we, so you find that we can do it, but you're gonna bring the item, the multi-year lease, up when it is time for the Prop 39 renewals.
Yeah, if the board gives us direction to do that, then the-
Okay, very good.
The staff will go back to the schools and, and start exploring this idea. Some, I'm sure, will be very much interested in it, others might not.
And, and then, I think we should have some criteria. I don't want it just to be based upon them being, but I think we should set some parameters as who can get multi-year leases and who can't. So, I, I support the, the notion for doing it, but I don't want it just to be based that your, your charter schools, you can therefore get a multi-year lease, it should be based upon some criteria.
Well, I think we can fill that into that discussion.
The limit should be the length of their charter.
Criteria generally.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry I interrupted.
Yeah, go ahead.
But my take on this is, I don't mind multi-year leases, but if we grant a charter for five years, and then at the end of the fourth year, they want to get a indefinite lease, I'm not sure we'd want to talk that way. I think that-
Right.
The term of a lease for a charter should be the extent of the term of their charter, and no longer, because what you do then illegally, I think, is the lawyer's over there, he can do whatever, but I believe if you give a person a charter, the charter is a charter. And, I mean, the lease is a lease, and if-
Right.
We don't have any subletting of it, they just get to use it for whatever purposes they want, and, and at the rate we charge them. I don't think I'd agree with that. I think it should be available for anyone else that needs it, for educational purposes.
Discuss all that.
They would argue they have a right to do it.
And John, I, I would agree with you. We want to maintain our options and flexibilities, and also support the charters, particularly where there's a degree of stability, and match a lease life to the charter life. It's clean that way, just, just so you're aware of that.
Okay, so, is, is moved a second that we do some more work? Is that correct?
Yeah, they're gonna bring back both, both of these items.
Okay.
That's all we agreed to.
Okay. Any more comments, questions?
You want to-
Okay, please, vote.
Mark, you want?
Come back with more specifics and the criteria we intend to apply.
On both the multi-year leases, then the Civic Center Act. We're just saying, go for it. Give us a report.
Yeah. It passes five zero. The board will recess for five minutes, and meet upstairs for a debriefing.
Okay.
I brought it my house.